Roll call, please.
Gilson. Coltsmo.
Close.
Milczewski.
Here.
Pat.
Here.
Muns.
Here.
Funkhauser.
Here.
Spears.
Present.
Teeling. You have more?
Okay, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Carol?
Your Honor, I just asked that, I see that the ZBA action and the Heron variance is last, and I see that Attorney Tom Grant is here to speak on that, so as a courtesy to Mr. Grant, I would ask that we move that up the agenda somehow, maybe. I don't want him to have to sit here all night.
We can put it right after consent if you'd like.
That would be great.
Got it? Anything else? Rose?
I would like to remove two items from consent. Actually, well, item number two. EDC 2011-29, removal of SSA from undeveloped portion of Grand Reserve.
Put that under EDC?
Yes, please.
You got it?
Just for further discussion.
Anyone else? I have two, under Mayor's report. I'd like to table an appointment with the building code official until next city council meeting, and move the KenCom agreement until after the executive session. I think that's it, right? Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, we do have a presentation this evening. A presentation to Plan Tolderman. For all his years of service on our planning commission, thank you, let us go forward.
Senator.
On your turn.
So, we have here is a certificate of appreciation. The mayor and city council of the United City of Yorkville presented this certificate to Plan Tolderman with our deepest gratitude for many years of service that he volunteered to our planning commission. From June 1983 to July 20th, November 9th of August 2011. The plan is eighteen years ago?
Twenty-eight.
A little more than that. Twenty-eight years. Twenty-eight years. Wow. It's been my pleasure to do all these years. I've been in San Yorkville my life here, live north of town here forever, and in the state, hopefully, the rest of my life, so I've been in part of the city and watched the planning come out here and things happen with it and how long with it to progress into a wonderful city that I could have.
Well, you appreciate that. You've seen some changes over the years.
Many, many changes over the years. I've just been there, yes, just been making a big difference by why the same thing's happening, it's what we need for growth, keep our community going, so we're all happy here to live in a good community.
Sure.
Sure, come on, Sandra, my wife. She left her with her broken wing. She thought she would be ever kicked if you found out she was not.
Okay. We go. Aye. Okay, we do not have our public areas. Citizen comments? Do we have any citizens who wish to address the council? Sir?
Your Honor, I just have one letter that I wanted everyone to be aware of that I'm going to be sending to Senator John Kerry for his remarks in calling those that opposed the budget amendment, which I have here for raising the debt ceiling in our nation. I think he was too critical, I think he was unfair as far as a senator. They spent, the Democrats spent, wrote 2,700 pages for a healthcare law, and then we have $14 trillion in debt. It's only 28 pages. And he said that many of the activists that were folding things up were basically holding guns to Congress's head. So, it said Senator Kerry, sometime ago, a military man in uniform addressed Senator Barbara Boxer as ma'am, to which she replied, "Don't call me ma'am, call me Senator Boxer. Call me Senator." Boxer was correct in making the request, as ma'am is used in the military as a form of respect, to which Boxer was not entitled to, considering her votes that helped lead to this debt crisis, along with everything that is wrong in Washington. Notwithstanding, Senator, your foul-mouthed remarks that you have made against our citizens are no exception. Never in my lifetime did I ever dream that a member of our Congress would go out of their way to call anyone disagreeing with them as gun-hostage-taking people who held Congress hostage. Senator, I need to remind you, you are one of the people who have opposed the Second Amendment, now along with the First Amendment. Senator Kerry, I remind you that it is you, along with the President of the United States and others in your party, including Harry Reid, Nancy Pelosi, Chuck Schumer, Dick Durbin, et cetera, who are frightening the American people with new or higher taxes should they make a profit. It is you who then has an armed force called the Internal Revenue Service, ready with armed agents using live ammunition, who have taken people's property in armed raids, and even when found innocent, many have lost their life savings in defending themselves. Senator Kerry, it is then you and others like you who have brought this economy to a halt with your tax threats. You, sir, with others, who think you are the ones that are the ones that should be called tax terrorists, and considering that you have the IRS to collect your taxes, you should then also be considered armed and dangerous. I have no culture on my signature, Your Honor, and just included a P.S., don't tread on me. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, next, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Salute.
Second. Oh, please.
Coltsmo.
Aye.
Milczewski.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Muns.
Aye.
Funkhauser.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we moved up the ZBA Board of Appeals report. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving sign variances for the property located at 9675 Route 34, Veterans Parkway, Heron Robbery, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. Coltsmo.
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Spears.
Aye.
Muns.
Aye.
Milczewski.
Aye.
Gilson, sorry, Teeling, sorry, Funkhauser.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Coltsmo.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is minutes for approval. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the city council for July 12, 2011, as presented.
Salute. Second.
Comments, questions on the minutes?
Asking somebody else a chance. Page three, under percentage on the, second paragraph. Starting Alderman Kalismo, the word, it says for prosperity, I think you said austerity.
I believe I said prosperity.
Prosperity, okay. And then, under minutes for approval, the full paragraph, second full line up, as well, is repeated twice, the words, it says as well, as well. Then on page five. One, two, third paragraph, starting with Alderman Funkhauser, at the last full sentence, it says, "Handrails could be done with enough staff," it was in-house staff. Next paragraph, one, two, three, four, fifth line down, it has it, "I stated about the stamped concrete, I clarified what the stamped concrete was going to be." And then, in the middle of it, it said, "I stated it was something the city could use." It said, "It was something the city could lose," in reference to the pattern in the cement.
The bottom of page seven, it just says, Alderman Kalismo will move to table, back to public works, it says, "It will affect the rate and reduce the consumption." I said, "How it will affect the rate if we reduce our consumption?" So, I just wanted to clarify, I was questioning that.
Also with that one, it says, "Motion approved." I wonder if we could clarify, that was the motion to table was approved.
Page seven, the third paragraph, has me stating that the widening of Route 47 is work well, we're actually discussing Route 71.
Anyone else on the minutes? You need a minute, George?
Yeah, I have one. Here, we can hear you right. Page five of nine, first paragraph. It says, Alderman Gilson said that, said adding sidewalks is not going to cost additional money, I dot will throw that in there. Actually, what I said was Alderman Gilson asked if adding sidewalks is going to cost us any additional money, and if I dot, we'll throw those in there. Kind of changes the text, context of what I was saying, so appreciate that.
Is that it, George?
That's it.
Anyone else on minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Okay, under Mayor's report, I dictable the appointment with the building code official, and I move KenCom until after executive session, so we'll move on to Public Works Committee report.
Here with me, Eric.
Yeah, take your time. Okay, motion to authorize the city administrator and finance director to sign a one-year contract with Santana Energy Services for the 10 municipal accounts with service addresses of 804 Game Farm Road, 1955 South Bridge Street, 201 West Hydraulic Street, 202 East Countryside Parkway Suite E, 1 Van Emmon Road, 610 Tower Lane, 610 Tower Lane Unit B, 131 East Hydraulic Street, and 902 Game Farm Road, and 1 Route 47.
Comments or questions on progressive energy?
I actually emailed Bart, I don't know if you got the email or not. I had questioned the last council meeting whether or not by moving those 10 accounts to Santana, what would be the ramifications on NICOR's end if we took 10 accounts away from them, if there'd be any changes in rates or any impact on what it would cost the city, and I still haven't seen any answers for that.
It would have no impact.
And that was verified by NICOR?
It was.
Okay.
Did we ever, did you ever call NICOR to see if they'd meet the price, or?
We made contact with NICOR, I don't know if that specific question was posed.
No, I just made contact with NICOR just to verify it wouldn't affect our rebate, but no. I never tried to match prices or anything like that with NICOR.
Comcast or anything, tell Comcast you leave for AT&amp;T and they'll all of a sudden lower your rate. Anything else on progressive? Roll call, please.
Funkhauser.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Coltsmo.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Muns.
Aye.
Milczewski.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We did move something from consent to EDC committee report.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make most approve EDC 2011-29, removal of SSAs from undeveloped portion of Grand Reserve, Point A ordinance terminating special service area number 2004-103, north of Grand Reserve, number peeling, ordinance number 2004-50, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Okay. How much questions on that one? What were you pulling off?
I did. First of all, did we notify the Grand Reserve people that are living there right now?
As we discuss that committee, first, do you want to point issue?
There was a notice in the paper that's required with the amendment to the SSA or any type of development wide agreement. So, there were no individual ones in that because it's not required by our ordinance, but there was a notification in the paper. Okay, in the record? Yes. I would like to request that this be tabled at this time until I can notify the ones that are on my e-mail blast list, or if we could have had a first reading or something here.
I agree with Rose, I think there's a couple of things we should see before we move forward on this. One is the punch list, and where they're at with that punch list. I haven't seen any, I guess I'd like to know is developers, the bank, correct? That's what we're looking at, we're looking at dealing with the bank, and, you know, I'd like to see the punch list items, see what's complete and what isn't, what's left due, and what that equates to in dollars. And then if we repeal the SSAs, do we risk not getting these punch list items completed long-term? You know, I, you know, especially with, I'd like to know if there's any, I'd like to know that the developer or the bank received that punch list, confirmed that they know what those punch list items are, and that they acknowledge that those things are still things they need to get done, because, you know, I'd like to know if there's going to be anything they'll be disputing.
Sure.
And I'm, just for the record, I'm totally against SSAs. I hope we never see these things again, but I want to make sure we have our bases covered, and I think there needs to be some discussion about that first.
Let me see if I can take this back a couple steps and explain what we're doing, and how it does and doesn't impact the residents. We're talking about two specific areas of Grand Reserve. In general terms, one is south of Bristol Ridge Road, it's undeveloped farmland, there's no infrastructure on the property, hasn't been platted, so there's no lots entitled there, there were no bonds that were sold as part of the SSA, so there is no punch list other than you have to build the entire subdivision, but there's no residents out there. So, that one, in my opinion, is probably relatively clean from a practical perspective, because there are no residents in the area that would go, you know, "Why are you removing an SSA on that property?" So, the second one is in the north. The north is a partially developed area, there are punch lists in the subdivision. The difference is there is that this SSA in that area was enacted, so it was created, okay? So, it exists. The ability for us to tap it to use in the future for infrastructure is a legal possibility, not very practical, and I'll get to that in a second, but it is there, and that's, can be, I believe, entirely at our option, could be a mutual agreement with us and the developer in the future. Now, what that would do is if we chose to enact it at some point in the future, is we would sell bonds, we would go out and complete the infrastructure, and then every resident in that section of the subdivision would then pay an SSA tax for us to do that work. Okay? So, what we're doing in the north area is we're saying, developer, you built these houses without using an SSA, you built the infrastructure in the unit without an SSA, you financed those costs yourselves, you increased the price of your home from the get-go, so you're a traditional, you know, developer, you're not using an SSA at all. And what we're saying is, we're removing that possibility of a future developer ever using the SSA in the future from being a possibility. So, we're saying, future developers, future city council members, we're removing this SSA from the tax rules, from the property, and if you ever want anything done on this parcel, you're going to have to do it out of your own pockets in the future. So, I appreciate that there are unfinished pieces of infrastructure in the subdivision in that area, that an SSA would actually remedy the construction of those unfinished pieces of infrastructure. But what we'd be doing is we'd be enacting immediately like a $2,500 tax on each house in that subdivision to do so, which in my opinion, isn't a practical solution at any point in the future. And further, we have had a lot of realtors, property buyers, that have bought properties up in this northern area of Grand Reserve in the past few months, that have said, "What is this? It's on my, it's on my title report, does this mean that it's dormant, you know, what does it mean?" And I've explained that, that at some point in the future, as long as this is on your title report, a future city council could come along and say, "You know what? We are going to enact this, we are going to sell bonds, we're going to finish the infrastructure so it looks perfect, and then everybody's going to have to pay $2,500 a year for infrastructure that was already partially complete." To me, that didn't seem fair, and what I've told realtors is, you know, I couldn't see a city council ever in the future making that decision, but it is legally available. So, and what we're doing here is we're just saying, that's off the table from this point forward, and we can never use it again.
Might I add something? We believe it will protect your homeowners, and so passing it and then doing the e-mail blast is what I would recommend. Of course, I can't tell you what to do, because as Bart correctly states, this was an SSA never implemented, and we do not want anyone within that area ever to be affected by it. So, we think by doing this and doing this quickly, we protect in the empty areas the future, which carries forth the policy of this city council number one, and protects the unenacted SSA against those homeowners that are already there. So, we highly recommend we go forward with this as quickly as possible.
The practical issue, too, from a development, future development standpoint, is that buyers, large property buyers, don't want anything to do with SSAs, even to the point where they're looking at this and saying, you know, "This should be technically a good thing, because that means you have an option, you know, as a developer." They're looking at it and saying, SSA is such a negative stigma, that even though this is a good thing for me, I know that nobody's ever going to want to buy this property in the future from me, because it has an SSA on it. So, we need to get that out of the, out of the picture immediately.
My question would be, the people that are currently paying the SSAs in Grand Reserve, and they paid for the infrastructure, they paid for everything that's in there, so how do they benefit?
They don't. The ones that are there in this circle did not have an SSA impacted. So, the assumption is, we can't prove it, but we were told that they paid a little bit more for their homes, because the developer paid the SSA, as opposed to those residents who are paying the SSA supposedly, and again, this is what we were told, paid less because they would have to pay the SSA over the, in the future. So, what we want to do is we want to protect, we want to allow the property in the United City of Yorkville to be more marketable, that getting away the potential for it, which is your philosophy, and number two, protect any reversal from what was agreed by these homeowners when they bought their homes.
And it's just really unfortunate, because we have one large subdivision that's all called Grand Reserve, but the way they structured the development deal in the annexation agreement is that essentially there were three separate pods, and even within those pods, there were many SSAs and variable-rate SSAs, okay, that have nothing to do with this, so you have to look at it like three separate subdivisions. So, the middle, which is the central, which is where everybody's paying the SSA right now, was activated. You know, they built the water tower, they built the detention basins, the streets, and everything else that was SSA-eligible with those bonds, and those residents that are benefiting from that infrastructure are paying for that. But these people up north are benefiting from that, so they're not paying for it.
And we don't want it ever to be there.
Correct.
Well, I can understand that, but I also remember Autumn Creek, when Polte decided, you know, for that weekend, they weren't going to have, you know, they put their signs up, "No SSAs," and those people were outraged.
Yep.
And I'd hate to see the same thing happen here.
We're doing the reverse, we're getting rid of it. Well, I mean, four, two of the, well, the third, we can't, it's been enacted.
Right.
And again, we are told that it was to do with your purchase price, but not to remove this would expose those few owners in one area, and reduces the marketability of the totally unimproved area. So, that's why we've come up with this recommendation. All Grand Reserve has done in this is asked us the possibility, we researched it, staff reviewed it against the properties, they have to pay the legal expenses incurred by the time drafting, so that citizens of Yorkville do not have to incur any expense in connection with this, but we highly recommend it.
Well, I could also see the advantage, the people that are paying the SSA and, they would be good, because their property, surrounding property would be marketable, and...
Yeah, they do want the development. You're right about that, too. You had a lot about that, you're right. It helps them in a...
Well, that's how it's all came about, and my charge of Kathy and Bart was, how do we get Grand Reserve fucking moving?
Right.
And this is one, one step in the right direction.
I can see that.
I can see the advantages, too, but I still have a couple of questions. One, punch list-wise and bond-wise, do we have enough bonds to, in place now, to cover the punch list if Grand Reserve sits for a year? I've always had this concern, but development that sits, we take out the estimate, and that original estimate sits five, 10, 15 years, you know, we don't have enough when it comes time, or in some instances, we didn't have enough, like we never, we didn't have enough bonds in place, and sunflower, you know, in some of the other areas, there were things of dispute that were on the punch list item, like sunflower. I guess I would like to know before I, and I don't know what the, is there an immediacy and urgency to this, but I'd like to know what bonds are in place, what the punch list equals in terms of dollars, and if we have the appropriate dollars to cover those, if there's problems down the road with, with, for north.
These SSAs are not tied to the questions that you're asking.
North Grand Reserve has a punch list. North Grand Reserve has a punch list, they have millions of dollars in bonds, they're relatively well-off, because they chose not to go with the SSA. So, as far as having infrastructure to complete and having bonds in place, there are some. Whether or not they're equal to the amount of outstanding work, I'm unsure of, to be honest, but I don't think that you can necessarily marry these two issues. And I don't see us as being able to use this as leverage against getting work done in the subdivision. But are you comfortable, or is the council comfortable with if North Grand Reserve has, I'm going to throw a number out there, Bart, $5 million of punch list items, and we don't have bonds to cover that work, and we go ahead and release anything that we have to assure that those items get completed, where does that leave us? That leaves us in a fight with the bank without any leverage.
The SSA would not give us the right to tap, and all we would be doing is taxing homeowners. This actually, and Bart said aggressively, they're not married, because if, let's say, worst-case scenario, you found out that the bonds or the LOCs were deficient, having these SSA in place would not allow us to make up for that deficiency.
It would not?
No.
What are SSAs for, then?
SSAs, the one is attributable to, one SSA that we're removing is attributable to a section that, it may as well be a different developer, so that there's no nexus between the two. The other one, if we implement it, would in fact tax those residents, how many residents are there?
I understand that, but SSAs are, you're right, a tax on the residents to pay for infrastructure, and that's what they are. And if we release that, and some of those punch list items are attributable to that same infrastructure, we have now released anything that we have to make sure that things get done. And I'm not saying, what I'm trying to say is, I don't want to see residents get, build, you said, 2,500 per house, I don't want...
I don't wanna see that. I think what you're saying is good, but I also would like to see, and I don't understand, first of all, why we don't have bonds in place against this. If anybody can answer that for me now, it'd be great.
We do have bonds.
Are they equal to the punch list dollars?
Yeah, there are bonds in place for earthwork, there are bonds in place for other types of.
Right. Are there bonds in place for infrastructure?
Yes. The question, your question though, is, is the dollar amount of the remaining work sufficient? Is the dollar amount of the bonds sufficient to do the remaining work? After five years of inflationary cost constructions, I don't know that off the top of my head. And I'm saying, yes, you are releasing your ability to potentially get the infrastructure completed by removing the SSA. I'm saying the end result of that game is unacceptable as a policy decision. To me, to make a recommendation to say, keep this in place because, you know, I think it would be acceptable 10 years from now to, you know, enact the SSA and complete the infrastructure at a cost of, you know, thousands of dollars per resident.
Can you answer this question? Is there an immediacy to pass this right now at this council meeting? Is there an urgency?
Yes.
Why?
The sooner we get it reported, the sooner that we can move forward and make sure that it's not implemented, either to eliminate marketability of the property, or to allow it to be implemented against residents who are, have paid what they believe to be the fair market value without an SSA. And we're not married issues.
If we do not pass this tonight, then you will implement that $2,500 per household immediately? Is that what you're telling me?
No.
Okay.
So if no developer wasn't at the property, they walked away.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no problem there with the SSA.
And the alternative to leave it in place, just, to me, there's no logical reason why you ever enact it in the future, so the sooner you get it off, the better, which is why, you know, it should be done sooner rather than later.
Well, in the future, if this, especially the north section, I don't think we have a question with the southern section. I mean, there's nothing there, let's release it, no big deal. The northern section, in the future, if we have an issue, obviously a new developer's gonna come in, buy up this land, and develop it. If we have an issue with things not being completed, that's something that we need to take up directly with the developer. I don't see any scenario in which this council is gonna enact an SSA and put a $2,500, $3,000 burden on the backs of a taxpayer and their homes for something that the new developer is failing to do. That's something that we as a council need to deal with the new developer. So I think when the new developer comes in, that's when we're gonna deal with this situation. I don't see any scenario where we're gonna put that burden on the taxpayer.
And even worse, too. I mean, if you think about it theoretically, five years ago, when the subdivision was beginning to be built, and somebody paid $300,000 for their house, it's worth two-thirds that now, let's say, you know, that cost of the infrastructure split among all the houses in the subdivision should have been factored in at that point. So theoretically, those people have already paid their fair share of the subdivision-wide infrastructure.
You're so right.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just, the question I ask is, if the infrastructure does not get done, and that subdivision sits, North Reserve sits without infrastructure, without any sort of mechanism to get infrastructure done, we're still in spot number one where we don't have a developer that's come in and put the proper infrastructure in, or we're fighting with a new developer to put the proper infrastructure in without any leverage. And I don't wanna put this on the table.
No, but Carlo said it well, by saying, we'd never enact an SSA, at least in the foreseeable future, even if that happened, we'd put it on the back of the developer.
Yeah. Even, one last question, I'm sorry, one last question if you don't mind. Even with the inflationary policy that I, or vast to be enacted, even with that, just out of curiosity, we're nowhere near equal in punch list to the bonds being held?
No. And especially for a lot of the subdivisions, if they have FELOCs and stuff, that particular punch list policy wouldn't have been applied. So Grand Reserve, actually, their ordinance lock just expired a week ago. So, you know, we could do that calculation and say, you know, under the policy, you're deficient by $2 million in bonds or whatever, and send a notice to the developer, but we're not gonna get any leverage.
Yeah, and in reality, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think something that happened here, when the developer chose to use their own funding on this, we interfered into a duplicity here. The SSA at that point was not necessary. If a typical development comes in, they finance it on the wrong, without an SSA, the only recourse we have are the bonds that are issued. In this situation, they, they put in place an SSA, but they chose to finance it themselves, which at that point, they really should have relinquished the SSA. We should not even have on the table consideration the SSA if the developer had taken this off when they've decided to develop it. The SSA shouldn't even be an option, shouldn't even be a consideration, it should have already been repealed. I don't think we need to consider that, because that's not, if we were to enact this, we would be double taxing these residents, because they already had to pay for their portion, the bonds that were already issued. And if we were to go after this SSA, it would be wrong on our part, because we would be going after money that should not be an acceptable source. And I don't think that this should be an option. I agree with this. I understand your point, I mean, do we have enough matching funds? We probably don't, knowing that, the way that things have happened over the course of time, but I think this is one for the value of the property. Any of those lots are in the north part and the south part completely. This'll help market that piece, and it'll may spur some more development for us in this area.
And that's no reason I'm gonna vote for this. I'm gonna vote in favor of it, but, you know, I've said this time and time again, and we still haven't taken any actions to correct this, but as these subdivisions keep sitting, and as we look at the original engineer's estimate, and we look at the bonds that are out there in place, and as they sit, and those bonds don't equal the cost of doing the work to current, we're gonna find ourselves in this situation over and over again, and this would be a no-brainer if we had bonds in place. I mean, it's still the right thing to do for the residents, but, you know, we need to start looking at this. And we, I've heard in the past that the council's going to do something about this, but we've done nothing, and we're still in this situation where, and I'm sorry, I think we're gonna see, that these developments sitting for much longer, I don't think this recession's anywhere near over, and as they keep sitting, and I think it's gonna be the same for every subdivision we have out there, we're gonna find ourselves short of bonds. And that is a real problem.
And I think the problem with it is, I mean, there's no one-size-fits-all solution. I mean, we have to take it on a as-it comes basis. You know, just like Bart said, when the subdivision's FELOC comes up, I mean, that's when we address these situations.
But, you know, we continue to FELOC, you know, we continue to do things to take away our revenues and concede to fees and do these different things, and that's just the opposite of what we're talking about now. So it's just something to think about.
I just wanna add that a couple of months ago, I did meet with the Grand Reserve North homeowners, and then I contacted Bart, because they had liens placed on their home by the county, and it was incorrect, they shouldn't have been, but it was regarding landscaping and things like that. County did correct it, and then Bart did clarify, because they saw the enacted SSAs on their property, on their deeds or whatever, and they were quite concerned. So I did e-blast them all, and they were happy, because everything was corrected. So I will vote in favor of this, because this is exactly what they want.
Carolina, do you want something?
Yeah, I think we got the votes.
Mike?
Aye.
Bill Shewski?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tom Hauser?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Wolcemo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm the Public Safety Committee.
Your Honor, there was, Ali has read eight.
I think they're together, aren't they?
Wasn't the motion for them together?
Yeah, you read the motion together.
I'd like to make a motion for an order to terminate special service area number 2004 H105, South Grand Reserve, repealing ordinance number 2004 H51, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Carolina, answer questions.
I don't know.
All call, please.
Will Schuessky?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tom Hauser?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz?
Motion carries.
I'm the Public Safety Committee, report.
I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the code of ordinances regulating on street parking on East Millbrook Circle, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Carolina, answer questions on this one. Roll call, please.
Tom Hauser?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Wolcemo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz?
Motion carries.
I'm the Public Safety Committee, report.
I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the code of ordinances providing for the liquor control, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Carolina, answer questions on this one. Roll call, please.
Tom Hauser?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Wolcemo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Will Schuessky?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tom Hauser?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Admin Committee, report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series 2011 of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12 million, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Okay, well, this is, we talked about the Admin Committee at length.
We talked about how we're gonna use the 1% sales tax, and we're using that exactly how we said we would. We're gonna use that as a revenue source to refinance these bonds that we have for all the sewer projects, and help meet us all these, these big balloon payments that are coming due. It will provide immediate property tax relief. We're looking, if we go this route, 15-year, probably 30% in the first year, and a couple percent each year after that, property tax relief. And with this refinancing, we should have a little bit left over to do some road projects. So it's giving us a little bit of relief that way also. So, I mean, this, to me, looked like our best option. I didn't know how it would meet all our obligations if we didn't do this and still provide the services that we do. So with that, I'll open it up to comments, questions.
You know, I'm not wanting to kick the can down the road, but I think, once again, you stated it pretty clearly with, you know, with the balloon payments and river road bridge repair, and Kane Farm Road, and Kencom cost, and some of these other items that are out there, I don't see how we can do it any other way. And, you know, I do see advantage of the short-term property tax relief, too. So I don't think we have much of a choice. It's not that we want this, but it's that if we're gonna meet our obligations, and we're gonna give some relief to property taxes as per, that's the reason we promised we were gonna, that referendum, what that referendum was all about, this has to be done, so.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest concern I have, obviously, is, we have a bond payment coming up in two years at $4 million. And Mayor, you just asked, I don't know how we're going to pay that. I know how we're gonna pay that. It goes on the property tax bills, because that's how the bond was written. And we just can't do that to the taxpayers. They already had an increase this time around. The bond agreement we had previously is unacceptable. We have no choice but to refinance. It does, it does add some interest, but it does open up a significant amount of monies for us to fix the bridge, fix the roads, hopefully get some money on some of the less desirable roads into municipality. And it averts us having to make these $3, $4 million payments, which the taxpayers simply can't afford. So I agree with George. I am not one to kick the can. I wish we could take the hit right now, just make the payment and be done with it. Property taxes just won't bear it. We just can't do it. So I'm gonna vote in favor of it. And just as part of the Administration Committee, we did look at different scenarios, 10-year, 14-year, 15-year, 17-year, and 20-year. And the best bang for our money by far was the 15-year refinance, so that's why we're recommending that one.
Just a point of clarification, on the property tax projections, down the road, six, eight years, whatever, what kind of growth was factored in? Was that a worst-case scenario, or how did you work that?
I did no growth. Basically, I showed 2% PTAL property tax cap increase year over year. From last year to this year, we were looking at 1.5% CPI growth, that's inflation. Last year before that, I think it was 2.7. The year before that, it was 0.1. The year before that, I think it was in the 1 to 2 range. So I estimated the general city property tax would increase 2% year over year, new growth not being a factor. So again, if new growth comes in, we're allowed essentially to increase our total amount that we ask for, like that growth had been here the prior year. So it shouldn't necessarily increase anybody's property tax as a result of it, our just total dollar amount will go up, so.
Did you have more there? No? Okay. And one other comment, too, and I ask this council and future councils, to watch what we spend, and if there's any surplus that we start designating, and there's no prepayment penalties, to start taking that surplus and putting it into this refi. And I hope we do that, and I hope we're mindful of that as we move forward, so.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Just a procedural note, this will be on the agenda again next meeting for a public hearing, and then, two meetings from then for a final vote. So this is not the final authorization for the bond.
Let's just get back to process.
It does.
Roll call, please.
Wolcemo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Will Schuessky?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Tom Hauser?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm the Public Safety Committee, report.
No report?
Plan Commission report?
No report.
ZBA, we did already? No city council report? City clerk's report?
No report.
Treasurer's report?
We have just one item, we have files from the police, potential other community that will be picked up as soon as we have.
I mean, community and liaison reports. Okay.
I attended the Yorkville Bristol Sanitary District meeting on August 8th, which was yesterday. Mark Helm made a presentation on the wastewater plant capacity for the west side, did a pretty extensive presentation, and we'll go through a lot of that, but there are some that I do wanna go through. The Yorkville Bristol Sanitary District was not comfortable with the data set, that the definitive statement that they will be at 100% of capacity by 2016, so they decided to wait and continue to see what happens with growth in that. Yorkville Bristol Sanitary asked about IDOT sanitary sewer replacement during the widening. Philippe asked about whether or not the city of Yorkville told IDOT not to replace any sanitary sewer during the widening of 47, and mentioned he thought he read an article in the record that said the city was saving millions by foregoing sewer replacement during the 47 project. Is any of that true?
No.
And I said that, that's why I wasn't sure what article he read.
Yeah.
If you could help me with that, because I know.
It was one of the general ones, where we were talking about the trails, and it was when the price had went down from 3.4 to 2.7 million, or whatever it is currently. So the price went down, and we didn't necessarily remove any work, except for the rails and the.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, series 2011 of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, in an aggregate per principal amount not to exceed $12 million, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Okay, well, this is, we talked about the Edman Committee at length. We talked about how we're going to use the 1% sales tax, and we're using that exactly how we said we would. We're going to use that as a revenue source to refinance these bonds that we have for all the store projects and help meet us all these, these big balloon payments that are coming due. It will provide immediate property tax relief. We're looking if we go this route with 15-year, probably 30% in the first year and a couple percent each year after that, property tax relief. And with this refinancing, we should have a little bit left over to do some road projects. So it's given us a little bit of relief that way also. So, I mean, this, to me, looked like our best option. I didn't know how we'd meet all our obligations if we didn't do this and still provide the services that we do. So with that, I'll open it up to comments, questions.
You know, I'm not wanting to kick the can down the road, but I think, once again, you stated it pretty clearly with, you know, with the balloon payments and river road bridge repair and, and Game Farm Road and KenCom costs and some of these other items that are out there, I don't see how we can do it any other way. And, you know, I do see advantage of the short-term property tax relief, too. So I don't think we have much of a choice. It's not that we want this, but it's that if we're going to meet our obligations and, and we're going to give some relief to property taxes as per, that's the reason we promised we were going to, that referendum, what that referendum was all about, this has to be done. So...
Yeah, I mean, the biggest concern I have, obviously, is we have a bond payment coming up in two years at $4 million. And Mayor, you just asked, I don't know how we're going to pay that. I know how we're going to pay that. It goes on the property tax bills because that's how the bond was written. And we just can't do that to the taxpayers. They already had an increase this time around. The, the bond agreement we had previously is unacceptable. We have no choice but to refinance. It does, it does add some interest, but it does open up a significant amount of monies for us to fix the bridge, fix the roads, hopefully get some money on some of the less desirable roads into, into municipality. And it averts us having to make these three, $4 million payments, which the taxpayers simply can't afford. So I agree with George. I am not one to kick the can. I wish we could take the hit right now and just make the payment and be done with it. Property taxes just won't bear it. We just can't do it. So I'm going to vote in favor of it. And just as part of the administration committee, we did look at different scenarios, 10-year, 14-year, 15-year, 17-year, and 20-year. And the best bang for our money by far was the 15-year refinance, so that's why we're recommending that one.
Just a point of clarification. On the property tax projections down the road, six, eight years, whatever, what kind of growth was factored in? Was that a worst-case scenario, or how did you work that?
I did no growth. Basically, I showed 2% PTAL property tax cap increase year over year. From last year to this year, we were looking at 1.5% CPI growth, that's inflation. Last year before that, I think it was 2.7. The year before that, it was 0.1. The year before that, I think it was in the 1 to 2 range. So I estimated the general city property tax would increase 2% year over year, new growth not being a factor. So again, if new growth comes in, we're allowed essentially to increase our total amount that we ask for, like that growth had been here the prior year. So it shouldn't necessarily increase anybody's property tax as a result of it. Our just total dollar amount will go up.
What, did you have one there?
No.
Okay. And one other comment, too, and I ask this council and future councils to watch what we spend, and if there's any surplus that we start designating and there's no prepayment penalties, to start taking that surplus and putting it into this refi. And I hope we do that, and I hope we're mindful of that as we move forward. So...
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Just a procedural note. This will be on the agenda again next meeting for a public hearing, and then two meetings from then for a final vote. So this is not the final authorization for the bond.
Let's just get back to the process.
It does.
Roll call, please.
Wolcemo?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Muntz?
Aye.
Will Shu speak?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Paul Hauser?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have a prep board report. No report? Plan Commission report?
No report.
ZBA, we did already. No city council report, city clerk's report?
No report.
Treasurer's report?
We have just one item. We have files from the police, potential order, community, we picked up, please.
I mean, community and liaison reports. George?
Okay. I attended the Yorkville Bristol San Perry District meeting on August 8th, which was yesterday. Yeah. Mark Helm made a presentation on the wastewater plant capacity for the West Side. Did a, a pretty extensive presentation. I won't go through a lot of that, but there are some things I do want to go through. The Yorkville Bristol San Perry District was not comfortable with the data set, that the definitive statement that they will be at 100% of capacity by 2016, so they decided to wait and continue to see what happens with growth in that. Yorkville Bristol San Perry asked about IDOT sanitary sewer replacement during the widening. Philippe asked about whether or not the city of Yorkville told IDOT not to replace any sanitary sewer during the widening of 47, and mentioned he thought he read an article in the Record that said the city was saving millions by foregoing sewer replacement during the 47 project. Is any of that true?
No.
And I said that. That's why I wasn't sure what article he read.
Yeah.
If, if you could help me with that, because I know...
It was one of the general ones where we were talking about the trails, and it was when the price had went down from 3.4 to 2.7 million or whatever it is currently. So the price went down. We didn't necessarily remove any work except for the rails and the, the stamping. So...
And that's why I told him, I said, the only article I knew about where we saved dollars for IDOT was related to the decorative bike trail type stuff. So I just wanted to make sure. Yorkville Bristol San Perry District was concerned about sanitary sewers repair and rehab, concerned about sewers backing up or collapsing. Yorkville Bristol San Perry District discussed who reports and permits, who reports, they said, SSO and permits, NPDS. They wanted to know who is reporting basement backups in Yorkville. Can anybody answer that for me?
No, but we'll find out.
Okay, and here's what I ask. He gave, Kevin Coleman gave me an email, and I, if you want to give that to me, I can be the liaison for that information. But he wants to know who reports the backups. He says it's Yorkville's responsibility to report backups in, in basements.
I'll come back to that. I think it's public work, but I'll come back to that.
Yeah. They talked about who has the legal authority over satellite communities for overflow and backups. And Yorkville Bristol San Perry District has permit, which is the NPDS permit, but they feel that it's our responsibility to report sewer backups, and they want to know if that's being done. They asked the question, does staff know, I already answered that, or asked that. They talked about the ice cream shop again. And, you know, I went back to them with the answers that you've given me for the questions they had the last report. And they said, despite what I'm being told, because I told them that, you know, you said that their permit was issued before any work was done at that ice cream shop. And they said, despite what anybody tells me, that's not the case. That, that, I mean, and permitting process was not completed with the San Perry District before work was done at that ice cream facility. And I, and what they want to know is Yorkville Bristol San Perry District would like Bart, Christie, and Brad from EEI, or whomever is necessary, to contact Kevin Coleman to sit down personally and discuss contacts, procedures for permitting, along with whom is handling permit applications, and how they go about making sure that the Yorkville Bristol San Perry District is contacted and issues a permit before any new construction occurs. So they'd like someone to contact, and they'd like to get that done personally.
Be happy to take that up with Mr. Coleman.
Okay. Please call Kevin or email him to set that up. Discussion on liability insurance needs. Yorkville Bristol San Perry District decided to wait and not purchase additional liability insurance at this time. There was a KenCom reduction of fees. In the past, Yorkville Bristol San Perry District claims they've given 50% reduction of any governmental construction. KentCom asked for this from, like, from the Yorkville Bristol San Perry District, and it was approved, a 50% reduction of fees for, for destruction of KenCom. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Are they going to be paying staff time?
Pardon me?
Are they going to be paying our staff's time? I mean, we're supposed to be a partnership, and it seems like they're just finding fault.
I think what, what they're trying, what they don't understand, and they asked me this, and I, you know, obviously I can only speak from knowledge, I can't speak for the council, but they asked with, with Joe being gone and EEI being in place, who, you know, who's doing the permitting, who they need to contact about the permits, and they want to, and what they really want to know is who they contact on a daily basis. And they want to make sure that if there's some construction, a permit comes into construction, they want to know the procedure that, that they, someone is going to them to get that YBSD permit before construction begins, because that is our policy.
Yeah, we're handling that at the staff level to a certain degree. I'm a little bit surprised that it's risen to the level it has. So that is something that is our responsibility. We'll take care of it, and, you know, we'll report back to you after it's taken care of.
Well, you know, I think it's a partnership, too, and that's why I think they want to sit down and just make sure that everybody's on the same page, so that nothing, you know, so that everybody, they know the procedure, they know who to call, and they know that they're coming, they're going to get the permits done first before any construction begins. And like I said, don't shoot the messenger. I'm just a liaison, so...
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm a little surprised, because we did sit down with them, and we've talked about all this, and...
A few times in person.
Yeah.
It's, it's something that we'll address.
Okay. That's it? That's all I have?
Well, I think we had a council member that was quite concerned, excuse me, without our city engineer no longer here, so questions could be directed. And this may just be fear of the unknown again. But, you know, the council is confident that EEI and Aaron Christie and Bart are going to do a wonderful job, and...
Yeah, Kevin showed me a card from some, maybe, it might have been the, a code-type person who did the code. And I didn't, wasn't familiar with that card, so I said, I really don't know who that is, but I do know that I mentioned your name, and I mentioned EEI, and I mentioned, and they said, we just want to, we want to make sure the channels are clear and permitting is done. So...
Well, thank you for your report.
Yeah.
Any other reports? I do attend a meeting with Tom Cross. He had a meeting for area mayors, along with Representative Kay Hatcher and the new representative, Donald Otto Morris, Pam Law, who, if they redistrict, will be representing a portion of Yorkville. Very nice meeting. They gave us an update on a lot of things that are going on downstairs as far as capital bill, gaming, changes to the TIF laws, which could affect us. I talked to them about our infrastructure problems and the repayment, working with IDOT for paying for some of the infrastructure improvements. So it was a very, very good meeting, and he's looking to do these meetings quarterly, but there are the mayors, so I will keep you posted on those. I think that's it, right? No, no staff reports, right?
No report.
Any additional business? I do have one. We have been given a challenge from the Park Board during hometown days. We are doing a, a little serving of beer contest. I guess to see who can write, generate more in tips if you guys are game. It'll be the Park Board, one booth, the city council and another booth. Whoever generates the most tips, they get the tips from both organizations to donate to the charity of their choice. So I'm just kind of throwing that gauntlet out there to see if our city council is interested in taking on the Park Board. I'm pretty sure we can take them. Scott, did you anything, Edman? Did I explain it correctly?
You did. I think spouses are voting as well.
It would be on a Friday evening?
Correct.
So what is it? Well, Labor Day weekend?
Yep, September 2nd. Typically from 4:00 to about 10:00. Really mostly needed from about 6:00 to 10:00.
Good.
It's hard to do it on Labor Day because a lot of our, we have families.
Well, then, I can get back to us. Or if Bart sent out an email, see who's available. I think two or three of us could take on the Park Board, but...
We still got our celebrity bar, our kind of shares, too.
I have my celebrity bar kind of share, yeah. So I think that's all I have for additional business. Anyone else? We want to entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation, purchase or lease of real property, and collective negotiating matters.
And personnel.
And personnel.
Second.
Roll call, right? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Paul Hauser?
Aye.
Kat?
Aye. Wolcemo? Aye.
Spears? Aye.
Aye.
We will be on the agenda on the town agreement after executive session.